Good evening, welcome to Herndon Town Council Public Session, April 11th, 2017.
Good evening, everyone, I'll call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we have several sets of minutes up for approval, and we will call for separate motion on each, is there a motion to approve the March 28th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? We're excited tonight, it's budget season, discussion on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries, is there a motion to approve the March 31st through April 1st Town Council Treatments?
So moved.
We're gonna have to arm wrestle for it, discussion on the motion? Thank you, did not spend the night, in case the audience is wondering how that went, okay, Ms. Olem was not able to attend, so she will abstain, so I'll call the question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and one abstention, is there a motion to approve the April 4th work session minutes? Discussion?
That was nice.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that motion carries, we have several presentations tonight, the first one this evening is a proclamation to recognize Earth Day and Arbor Day, and I will recognize Councilmember Olem to read the proclamation, was that your reminder to read the proclamation?
Excuse me, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and excuse my ring, a Town of Herndon proclamation to recognize Earth Day, Arbor Day, April 22nd, 2017, celebrated each year since 1990, when like-minded group of Americans brought environmental protection to the forefront, Earth Day supports environment programs, rekindles commitment, and builds community activism. This year's theme, environmental and climate literacy, highlights the importance of education in mitigating the impacts of climate change, and encourages leadership and innovative solutions to environmental challenges. Arbor Day started in 1872, when John Sterling Morton called on farmers and homesteaders to replenish the tree population, by observing Arbor Day, we emphasized the importance of beautifying our town through landscaping and trees, and we serve as the trustees of our future generations, therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2017, as Earth Day Arbor Day in the Town of Herndon, encourage each community enhancement projects such as Boy Scouts Eagle Scout programs at the Herndon Centennial Golf Course, which included planting trees and building and planting a monarch butterfly weigh station, recognize all the dedicated volunteers that helped with tree and shrub planting, litter cleanup, and other environmental work efforts, and highlight that the town was designated as a Tree City USA by the Arbor Day Foundation for the 28th year in a row. Furthermore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all residents to participate in the town's Earth Day Arbor Day activities on Saturday, April 22nd, when local Boy Scouts, together with the Herndon Environmental Network, will be planting trees, mulching, building, and planting a monarch butterfly weigh station at Haley Smith Park, free tree seedlings will also be available to citizens. Furthermore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all individuals, businesses, civic and service associations, to recycle and celebrate nature, and to support the efforts promoting awareness of the value of trees and our environment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Olem, discussion on the proclamation, Ms. Olem?
Yes, we've been a Tree City ever since we got our forester, Mr. Trudinsky, and we just lead the way in the area, and Herndon now has more trees than it had probably at the turn of the last century, not this one, because it was a farming community, and it's really a lot of fun to go out and see the individuals that get involved, so whether or not you can go out and help them, maybe you can do your own little Earth Day Arbor Day at your own home, or with your own community, thank you.
Thank you, other comments from council, Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I think it's a fantastic thing, I mean, we did it in high school, and you sometimes go through the motions, but then you see what's happening with the environment and different things, and I can even give you a pretty local example, the Town of Norfolk, where a large Navy base is at, is two feet above, well, was two feet above the waterline in 1934, they've lost 14 inches of space there, as far as the water level's rising, and they're having an issue now in regards to their roads being closed for certain times when it rains too hard, you have flooding, you know, you have to have Department of Defense people able to get out in regards to defending the country, so, and even the Department of Defense has been looking at things, because with different patterns of weather and certain things, they have to move not only troops, but also, in the Navy, they have to move their frigates and different things, so, it's very important to be aware of these things, because, you know, we have to be micro-aware of what's going on because of the macro situation happening, so we have to do it ourselves, so I think it's a great thing.
Thank you, other comments from council, Ms. Friedrichs?
I come from a family that is very focused on the environment, my grandmother was a fairly famous environmentalist in Oklahoma, so that doesn't really mean much here, but I'm very proud that we are a city, a town, that takes into account the future of our children and our grandchildren, the cleanliness of our environment, and I'm just very glad that we are celebrating Arbor Day and Earth Day as we should.
Thank you.
I concur, I am thrilled that our council, as part of our vision statement, added a sustainability tenant a couple of years ago, and we now have a sustainability committee that is working towards some goals for the town, and we're trying to get some budget for that, so that we can put our money where our mouth is, because we only get one Earth, and at least in the Town of Herndon, we are taking care of it, so thank you for this proclamation, and I see many people in the audience who care about this as well, I'd like to invite down, from Friends of Runnymede Park, Carol Hadlock, and Jay Hadlock is here, and I think other members from Friends of Runnymede Park, from the Herndon Environmental Network, I see Christina, and Joe, and others, so I hope that you all come down and join us, as well as any staff that is involved in Tree City USA, and the many environmental things that we take care of, including Lisa Gilloran, John Dzinski, Cindy Roder, any staff from Community Development Parks and Rec that would like to join us, and come on down for the presentation, and Ms. Olem, actually, I'm gonna invite down the entire council.
And Town Manager.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for the reading the Earth Day Arbor Day proclamation, without your support and the support of the citizens, and Hen, and Friends of Runnymede Park, and volunteers, Boy Scouts, and everybody, we wouldn't have the type of town that we have today, and as the mayor mentioned, there's a sustainability plan, so we're not gonna rest on our laurels, we're gonna continue to move forward, do things better, improve places where we need to, and continue to improve our environment, so I just want to thank you for all your support, thank you.
Thank you, we couldn't do it without you, sir. Next up is a proclamation to recognize Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I'll recognize Vice Mayor Baker to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 9th through April 15th, 2017, public safety telecommunications are responsible for responding to calls for emergency assistance, and for dispatching assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens, public safety telecommunications are the first contact citizens have with emergency services, and provide a critical link between our citizens and first responders. During Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, we honor public safety telecommunications, we promote awareness of the vital and invaluable assistance they provide to the community, and we recognize the hard work and dedication of these individuals who we rely on each and every day, therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia, hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through April 15th, 2017, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, in the Town of Herndon, and express appreciation to these extraordinary people who give their time, energy, compassion, professionalism, understanding, and resources to assist others, ensuring our community is a safer place to live, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, comments from council, Ms. Baker?
Sure, yeah, it's my pleasure to recognize this really special group of individuals, you know, you think about when you call 911, or you text 911, right, because now you can actually text as well, when you reach out and you need someone, you really need the person on the other line, not only to be capable and confident, and also to hopefully help you relieve some of your stress, because most likely you're calling, you're either scared, you're hurt, or you're in some other very stressful situation, they usually don't receive people's calls when they're at their best, right, so it's a really tough job, and I'm thrilled that we recognize them, and they work certainly hand-in-hand with our first responders, our awesome police force, and also Fairfax County Fire as needed, so really an honor to recognize these folks tonight.
Thank you, other comments from council, Mr. McKenna?
My sister was actually a 911 operator in New Jersey for a long time, and the stories she would tell, just from certain things that would happen, it's a very stressful job, I mean, you have to, you take in the information, keep calm, because the other person is obviously excited, you know, you're calling 911 for a reason, obviously, and then giving that information to an officer or somebody in the law, in a cool and calm manner, so that you can get that information to them as quickly as possible, and expedite everything as quickly as can be, and it's a part that some people don't see, but it's an integral part, and I can't thank them enough, because again, I've heard stories from Woodbridge, New Jersey, so I can definitely tell you that it's definitely appreciated here, so thank you.
Thank you, other comments?
Well, I concur with my colleagues, this is a group of people who make all the difference at a very stressful time in someone's life, when they're calling 911, and I want to recognize them for what they do for the community, and for the grace and strength that they have shown in the past year in particular, during some very stressful circumstances, so we are honored to honor you this evening. I will invite down Councilmember Friedrichs, and I guess actually the entire council, and I see several of our HPD officers here, the chief, Captain Anzen Gruber has moved behind the pole, but I know you're still back there, so we'd like to invite you all down for the presentation.
Ms. Mayor, Town Council Members, Acting Town Manager Bill Ashton, I appreciate the opportunity to recognize the invaluable contributions of our communications technicians, who continuously work to answer emergency calls for service in the Town of Herndon, I'm sorry that we couldn't, some of them couldn't be here tonight, but were short-staffed at the present time, for many residents who call the Police Department seeking help, our communications technicians are the reliable voice on the end of the line, as you all eloquently said, most of these folks are not having a good day when they call, the communications technician must remain calm and seek pertinent information in the most efficient way, from the caller, who may be experiencing a dangerous situation, and have a hard time articulating the necessary facts, the communications technician helps to guide them through the process, and obtained enough information to properly dispatch our officers, so they can safely arrive and handle the incident, it takes a special person to be a communications technician, they're behind the scenes, they must possess disciplined qualities such as patience, commitment, strength of character, grace under pressure, and our communication, our police telecommunications serve and make a difference in our community, they make us go, they're the first line of, the first person you're gonna contact when you call the police, they do a tremendous service for the town, and we appreciate them each and every day that we come to work, thank you for honoring them this week.
Thank you, sir. Our next proclamation is to recognize National Volunteer Week, and I'll recognize Councilmember Friedrichs to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, a Town of Herndon proclamation recognizing National Volunteer Week, April 23rd through April 29th, 2017, President Richard Nixon established National Volunteer Week by executive order in 1974, as a way to recognize and celebrate the efforts of volunteers, now in its 43rd year, National Volunteer Week has grown exponentially, with thousands of volunteer projects and special events scheduled throughout the country during this week, together with this week's theme, Service Unites, National Volunteer Week aims to inspire, recognize, and encourage citizens to join together and seek out creative ways to engage in their communities, during this important week, we emphasize the many contributions that volunteers make to improve the quality of life in our community, and express appreciation to one of our town's most valuable assets, our volunteers, therefore, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd through April 29th, 2017, as National Volunteer Week in the Town of Herndon, and promote the opportunity to honor the many volunteers who engage in Herndon community, in the Herndon community, selflessly dedicating themselves to the service of others. Further, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all individuals to take action by supporting volunteer programs that benefit Herndon residents of all ages, including the fields of health, history, recreation, safety, social services, sports, the arts, and the environment. Further, the mayor and Town Council of the Town of Herndon are keenly aware of and appreciate the dedication and contributions that Herndon's many volunteers, past and present, make toward improving our quality of life, and making Herndon a special place to live, work, and recreate, and for the 33rd consecutive year, the town looks forward to honoring Herndon's outstanding and distinguished individual and corporate volunteers at the mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Night, on Sunday, April 23rd, 2017, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am, discussion or comments from council, Ms. Friedrichs?
I, as someone who has both volunteered and benefited greatly from the volunteer activities of not only residents of this town, but people who love this town but don't live in it, I am really delighted to help recognize their efforts, your efforts, to making Herndon a wonderful place to live, and I just was kind of looking at some quotes online about volunteers, and found something that I think really expresses my thoughts beautifully, which is volunteering is the ultimate exercise in democracy, you vote in elections once a year, but when you volunteer, you vote every day about the kind of community you want to live in, and I thank you very much.
Oh, I like that, thank you, other comments from council?
Well, we are looking forward to seeing so many of you at the Volunteer Appreciation Nights coming up on April 23rd, we are honoring over 400 people this year, who've given more than 100 hours each to the town, or groups that benefit the town, so we are really grateful for that, all of the things in town that we love to experience could not happen without the volunteers that are willing to step up to help our community, Friday Night Live starts in about three weeks, I know they're always looking for volunteers, so go to herndonrocks.com if you're looking to sign up for that, Herndon Festival's right around the corner, and I know Cindy's always looking for good volunteers, so let us know if you'd like to help with that as well, and we have, many of our volunteers are here this evening, and if you have volunteered for the town, I want you to come forward for this proclamation, I see Friends of Runnymede Park, Joe Plummer's here, he's organizing TEDx Herndon completely on his own, it's May 6th, and we'll, how do you buy tickets, is it tedx.com, tedxherndon.com, their tickets are available, so we hope you'll join us for that, so I would like to invite down, like I said, members of Friends of Runnymede Park, Joe Plummer, I see some of our past distinguished volunteer award winners, and members of our boards and commissions and school board, and all the Parks and Rec staff that are here, please come forward, looking forward to it, and the whole council, I just assume you guys know that by now.
the Parks and Rec Volunteer Appreciation Night, because they do everything to make it such a wonderful evening, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, but we do it on your behalf, so we'll keep it with the title it has, and Madam Mayor and members of council, I just wanted to briefly say, because you've already touched on a lot of what the good is that happens with the volunteers in this community, and JD said the same thing a moment ago about Earth Day Arbor Day, that one of the things that makes Herndon so special is how many people, how many members of our community are engaged and committed to volunteering, and making things happen, and really making things special, the Herndon Festival benefits from over 1,500 volunteer hours each year, Friday Night Live, 20-plus years of volunteers, hundreds of volunteers every Friday night, all summer long, helping out, youth sports in our community are done primarily by volunteer coaches, and officials, and parents, thousands of people are involved in that, you have organizations represented here tonight, like the Friends of Runnymede, Herndon Environmental Network, the Historical Society, and we have advisory groups, and folks volunteering for a variety of initiatives in town, like the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee, and Just North Grove Cemetery Committee, or the Sustainability Committee that was mentioned, there's no possible way that a town this size, with the staff that we have, and the seven of you, that we could accomplish what Herndon has accomplished without all of these volunteers, so National Volunteer Week is one opportunity that we have to thank them and recognize them, and express our appreciation for their enthusiasm, their support, and their community service, so I appreciate you doing this recognition, we benefit from 5,000 hours of volunteer service in the Parks and Recreation Department, and I know you do as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, and next is a proclamation to honor Virginia Tech, and I'll call on Mr. McKenna to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Town of Herndon proclamation honoring Virginia Tech, the Town of Herndon has a kinship with the Town of Blacksburg and Virginia Polytechnic Institute State University, Virginia Tech, home of the Hokies, the town shares many common features with Blacksburg, and many of our citizens and staff members are alumni, or are family members who attended, or attend Virginia Tech, with sadness, our community remembered the tragic events that unfolded at Virginia Tech on April 16th, 2007, and we send our prayers and support to those families that lost loved ones, those that were injured, and those who were affected by the unthinkable events of that day, out of this tragedy, the Virginia Tech and Blacksburg community leaned on each other in grief, support one another in times of need, and grew stronger, Virginia Tech's motto is "Out prasum," which means that I may serve, Virginia Tech students and alumni are proud of their strong service culture, which helps them preserve, grow, and strengthen, together with the town's recognition of National Volunteer Week, the Town of Herndon recognizes the positive impact that Virginia Tech students and alumni have as volunteers in our community, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and Town Council, the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby offer its utmost support and respect to Virginia Tech, remember the tragic events that occurred 10 years ago on April 16th, and offer prayers of hope and healing, highlight the strong service culture at Virginia Tech, and recognize the thriving Hokie community in our town. Further, the mayor and Town Council, the Town of Herndon, Virginia hereby encourage all residents to take time to volunteer on April 16th, 2017, to honor the Hokie spirit of the serving community, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir, comments from council?
Yeah, I have a lot of friends here that went to Virginia Tech, but I also had, I have a very good friend from back home, who went to Virginia Tech, and I can tell you that the nation united after that happened, his family went through just an utter, he was in campus at the time, but he lost a brother a couple years earlier to a fire at a college, so when that news hit, it hit my hometown like a lead balloon, but everyone just gathered around, and the other thing that I found amazing was that, you know, everyone has their rivalries with schools, and, you know, back and forth, but everyone had Virginia Tech, like the very next year, you know, my school, other schools had V-Tech in red, white, and blue, and when one of us goes down, we all stand up, and that's the one thing that America should be proud of, and that was a microcosm of exactly what America should be, so even though I didn't go to school there, it was pretty stressful, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you, other comments from council, Ms. Olem?
I remember that day well, my oldest son had several friends at Virginia Tech, and we were all anxiously awaiting to hear from them, and it was a very stressful time for the Herndon community as well, because there were, I know we had one teacher that lost a child there, and just want to never forget what they went through, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I got my master's degree for Virginia Tech, it was at a satellite campus, so I can't claim Blacksburg is my second home, but I have, since I've served on council, gotten to know the mayor of Blacksburg, Ron Rortum, rather well, and when this day unfolded, he had been mayor for just a few short months, and every time a tragedy like this happens anywhere in the country, the first thing that comes to my mind is what in the world would I do if that happened in Herndon, and I pray that I never get to find out, I've spoken with him a little bit about it, he doesn't talk about it a lot, but it was certainly an upsetting day, and I learned a lot from him in a session a few years ago, were you with me, Jen, I think so, it was a session at Virginia Municipal League about being the mayor during a crisis, and he was one of the speakers, so the community really did pull itself together, I wanted to thank Joe Plummer, who is a Virginia Tech grad, is here in the audience, who asked for this proclamation quite a while ago, and wanted it to be in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, not to spend so much time grieving and mourning, but thinking about the good that did come from that day, and how the community pulled itself together, so that we are here today observing the 10th anniversary of that dark day, Sheila mentioned one of our teachers at Herndon Elementary, Rema, well, Rema Samaha was one of the many students who lost their lives that day, she was the youngest child of Joseph She was the youngest child of Joseph and Mona Samaha, and Mona, her mother, was and still is a resource teacher at Herndon Elementary School. Rema had a 4.0 GPA at Tech, and she'd planned to major in urban planning with a minor in French and International Studies. So today, along with celebrating the community spirit and the volunteerism that came and helped bring that community together, we also remember Rema's joy for life, her passion for learning, travel, theater, and dance, and her love of her family and friends. There is a memorial garden at Herndon Elementary School in her honor, and she is not forgotten. So are there any other comments from council? Okay, thank you. Well, I would like to invite down for the presentation, the entire dais, Joe Plummer is here, and any other Virginia Tech alumni that is in the audience this evening.
My name is Joe Plummer. I live at 626 Center Street, and I want to thank the Town Council for honoring the Virginia Tech community and its service culture, and also for remembering the members of our community that we lost on April 16th, 2007. This proclamation is an act of solidarity, which is a word I didn't really understand until the days and weeks following April 16th. In the darkest moment of Virginia Tech's history and the darkest moment of the lives of so many Hokies, communities from around the world sent condolences and messages of hope. Thousands upon thousands of words and acts of kindness poured into Blacksburg. These gestures told us that we are not alone, that we are loved, and that we are part of a global community. Now 10 years later, gestures like this proclamation and initiatives like National Volunteer Week serve as a reminder to everyone that they are part of a community, that they are loved, and that they are not alone. This ethos is important to remember as we confront the tragedies and injustices of today. As Hokies, we will always remember the love and kindness that was sent to us from afar in the days that followed April 16th, 2007, and we will strive to pay forward that love and kindness. Again, thank you to the Herndon Town Council and staff for this act of solidarity, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Joe. That brings us to the comments portion of our agenda. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, a couple announcements. I wanted to remind everybody that Big Truck Days in the Town of Herndon are coming up. The Town of Herndon's Department of Public Works hosts its annual Big Truck Days, an opportunity for children and their parents to see the Town's big trucks and heavy equipment on display. Light refreshments will be served and souvenirs will be provided to the children. Big Truck Days will take place Thursday, May 4th, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and Friday, May 5th, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Public Works Maintenance Complex, 1479 Sterling Road. The event is free, however, attendees are encouraged to bring nonperishable food, donations for the needy. And the second announcement is the Herndon Police Station will be a collection site for the upcoming National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 29th. You can drop off expired and unwanted medications between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the police station. And on the consent agenda tonight is the establishment of the Herndon Parkway Committee. It's something that I've been looking forward to for a long time. We're going to be able to take a particular look at the development across jurisdictions that's being, coming our way, both in Fairfax County, Loudoun County, and I guess thirdly in the Town of Herndon. We have a lot of development in each one of those areas that are going to affect every citizen in the Town of Herndon, and we're going to take an opportunity, look at those, try to anticipate some problems, and head them off before they become problems. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McKenna.
It's a hard act to follow. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Ms. Friedrichs.
As you say, a tough act to follow. Yom Hashoah Holocaust Remembrance Day is observed this year on April 24th, and in honor of that event, that remembrance, and because of some very good fortune on our part, Arts Herndon and Art Space have an exhibit honoring two Holocaust survivors at Art Space right now. It goes through May 6th, and our artist's reception will be on the 29th of April. It is by far one of the best things I have seen at Art Space, and I encourage everyone to go. At the same time, unfortunately, at the same time that the volunteer appreciation night, we will have, if you've seen The Woman in Gold, that film, or read the book, the caregiver for that lady, Maria Altman, will be speaking at Art Space about a book he wrote about her. She, her husband was a Holocaust survivor, and she fought to get some art that was confiscated by the Nazis returned to her family. And I highly encourage you to come to this event. You don't necessarily have to stay for the whole thing, but I think you'll find it fascinating. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Olem.
Thank you. The show that is on display right now that Councilwoman was talking about was actually a similar show was seven years ago when the two artists were alive. At that time, they were 89 and 99, so they have since passed, but that was a spectacular show. It was probably the largest event we had ever had at Art Space at that time, and this one is absolutely gorgeous, so I hope you'll see it. Also, the TEDx event, I call him my third son. I was his host mother, Bella, back in 2010, seven years ago, so the same year that exhibit was here. Will be speaking at TEDx, so I'm very proud of my third son for being asked to speak at that, and I hope you'll come see him. And you don't have to be a child or have one to go to Big Truck Days. It's a lot of fun, even if you're just a kid of heart. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham, I don't know why I skipped over you. I apologize.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. We've got some great volunteers, not just individuals, but corporate businesses. If you have a gently used prom dress that you would like to donate, JJ Deli is a collection site for Cinderella's Closet, and they're taking donations of gently used prom dresses now through April 22nd to be made available to young ladies who may not be able to afford a nice prom dress. So if you haven't stopped by JJ Deli, this is another great reason to do so. Also, in less than two weeks, our farmer's market starts. It's every Thursday morning from 8:00 to 12:30, starting April 20th all the way through November. Stop by, there are going to be some great vendors this year. And last, I want to wish everybody a happy Passover.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Sure. So after Big Truck Days, it's the third, it's where Friday Night Live starts, right? So three weeks from Friday, so you can go to Big Truck Days, donate some food, then go to Friday Night Live. And it's '80s music is how we're kicking that off, so I'm excited about that one. I want to also mention Next Stop Theater. So right now, their play from, it started a few days ago through the end of the month, is Boeing Boeing, which is just a funny, very physical comedy. I felt like I was watching sort of an episode of Laverne and Shirley, like just lots of just physical, they must have been exhausted at the end. It was very fun, very entertaining, just a fun way to spend an evening as opposed to going to a movie. Just go do something fun. I know several people have mentioned TEDx. I'm going to mention it again, because I really think it's super impressive that we have a TEDx in Herndon. This is our third year. Much, again, much thanks to Joe Plummer, who we've already mentioned tonight. So it's at Herndon Middle School. It's on Saturday, May 6th. Joe's changed the format this year, so now it's from 2:00 to 6:00. Last year, it was a longer day, so I think he's really been super selective. He's picked amazing speakers like Bella Khan, who Sheila mentioned, and also Kwame Alexander, right, who's a Newberry Award winner. I mean, there's some amazing speakers, and the theme is difficult conversation, so all about how do we talk to each other, collaborate? I think it's a great theme. Again, 2:00 to 6:00 on May 6th. And buy your tickets by Monday, because you'll save a lot of money. So it's about 40 bucks if you buy it before Monday, by April 17th. After that, it goes up to 60 bucks. If you ever listen to TED Talks, or, you know, go online and watch a TED Talk, or there's podcasts on TED Talks, there's always something to learn. They're fascinating, so highly encourage you to attend in person. It's nothing quite like it.
Thank you. I will pile on about TEDx Herndon, because in addition to Kwame Alexander, Nikki Giovanni will also be a speaker there. They are both Virginia Tech alumni, so I'll throw it, toss that out for the Hokies, but it is well worth the 40 or $60 admission fee to see these talks in person. You know, TED, the idea behind TED is ideas worth spreading, and I think Herndon has a lot of those ideas, and I'm really, in fact, Bella's story is a lot about his experience in the Town of Herndon when he was, when he was here seven years ago as a high school senior. So I can't wait. Obviously, we're excited, so I hope to see some of you guys there. Everybody took all my remarks. I was going to talk about the farmer's market, so I will throw in on...
Did we mention farmer's market?
Yeah, Grace, and it's starting April 20th this week. Usually, it starts the first week of May, so we've got a couple of extra weeks, and I think it now goes through November instead of cutting off in October, so getting close to year round. We're excited. April 22nd is not only Earth Day, we have a couple of other events going on in the Town of Herndon. One is, there is an Autism Festival that's taking place at Herndon Middle School. This is largely sponsored by Growing Kids Therapy Center, which is a local speech therapy center here in Herndon. It's owned by a Herndon resident. And in a couple of weeks, we will be issuing a proclamation for Autism Acceptance Month, which was written by her students at this center, so we're looking forward to welcoming them here in the chambers two weeks from tonight. But Saturday, April 22nd, at Herndon Middle School, there will be activities going on all day long. You can call the clerk's office, or contact me, or visit www.growingkidstherapy.com/events for more information. And also on that day, in downtown Herndon at 10:00 a.m. is the grand opening of our new fire station in downtown. It's long awaited. The firefighters have moved in. I think they're settling in nicely, and we look forward to...we don't cut the ribbon, we unfurl the hose at a, I've been told, at the fire station, so we're looking forward to that. Hope to see some of you there. Okay, so this is the portion of the agenda for anyone in the audience to come forward and speak on any item that is not listed as a public hearing item. This includes anyone that would like to comment on anything that's listed on the consent agenda, including the Herndon Parkway Advisory Committee, which we are very excited about. If you're here to speak about the budget, we'll have a time for that during that public hearing, so if you'd like to come forward and speak on any other item, you have up to three minutes. State your name and address for the record. When the red light comes on, try to wrap up. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Chisholm. Am I in position here? I live at 633 Spring Street, and neighbors and I would like to advocate for a public works matter of having traffic managed better along Spring Street. People are going 40 miles an hour, and it's really getting very hazardous, Sheila, I'm sure you would agree. And whether we get speed bumps, or a stop sign, or if we do a petition, you tell me what we do, but it's really getting, we're of course worried that it's going to get to be much more of a problem with all that's ahead and with the growth of the community. So I'm Priscilla Chisholm. I'm happy to, love the Town of Herndon, love how it's managed, and we just want to support you in planning rapidly to keep Spring Street safe for the people who live there. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. We do have a process to go through for items like that, so I'll connect you with our Department of Public Works.
They asked me to just send them a note, so I sent them an email and asked for whatever would follow from that.
Okay, we'll follow up on that with you this week. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item? Yes, ma'am. Followed by Mrs. Hadlock. Oops. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for, this is actually my first time here in the Town of Council, so it's really wonderful, and I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Priscilla Chisholm and Mr. Bill McKenna for having me here. My name is Jeremy Batalk. I am a family nurse practitioner, two things. I live in 505 East Stanton Avenue, Sterling, not in Herndon, and also I am not a Virginia Tech. In fact, I'm a UVA alum, but certainly a camaraderie, you know, with Virginia Tech and certainly support that. But I'm here today, you know, to talk about, I could certainly see the theme of Town of Council here in Herndon is they talk about the sustainability and, of course, you know, the health and well-being of the community in Herndon. And my passion is definitely the health and wellness of our community. So I started a nonprofit organization called My Health Matters in Virginia.org, and our goal and our mission is to empower and encourage our community in preventing obesity, starting from childhood obesity, and creating a sustainable, healthy lifestyle. So that is our goal, and we would like for you to join us in this initiative. And if you know anyone who's interested, who you know who could benefit from this, definitely we welcome them. We welcome you to join us in this initiative. We are having our first health fair event on May 20, 2017, here in Town of Herndon. It's our first health fair event, and it's the My Health Matters 5K One Mile Run Walk. So if you want more information, please feel free to visit our website called www.myhealthmattersvirginia.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Carol Hadlock. I live at 515 Alabama Drive in Herndon. A lot going on in April and May, and I have one more thing to add to your calendar. In keeping with the mayor's monarch pledge and the Town's new emphasis on sustainability, Friends of Runnymede Park and Herndon Environmental Network are sponsoring a native plant sale in Runnymede Park on May 6th from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the afternoon. Our vendor is Watermark Woods Nursery. They're located in Hamilton, Virginia. They grow all their own plants, which are native to our region and pesticide-free, so no neonic, no toxic chemicals that are going to poison your bees and butterflies when they come to feed on your flowers. I know the sale is still three and a half weeks away, but we're hopeful that that will give everybody time to take a look at your landscape and figure out where you might stick in a few more native plants. I'm sure the pollinators will thank you, and the environment will thank you, so mark your calendars. Native Plant Sale, Saturday, May 6th, 10 to 2. Thank you.
Thank you. You could go on your way to TEDx Herndon. Plenty of time for everything. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not one of our public hearing items? Okay, thank you very much. We have several public hearings this evening related to the budget. The next three, the next three in fact are related to the budget, so I'll outline the process. Tonight is the first of two public hearings on the recommended budget. The second will be held two weeks from tonight. First, I'll call in the Town Manager to give his presentation on all the items concurrently. Then I will open the public hearing on the proposed ordinance to levy real estate taxes, followed by concurrent public hearings on the remaining two items. I'll then ask for motions to continue the public hearings until April 25th. All comments that we've received so far have been entered into the record. To adopt the proposed budget on April 25th, the ordinance to levy taxes on real estate will be a separate hearing and will require a two-thirds vote of council, which is five. The public hearings on the fiscal planning resolution and the appropriations ordinance may be concurrent. The fiscal planning resolution will require a majority of those present and voting, which is four if all members of council are present and voting. Little math lesson for us. The appropriation ordinance will require a majority of council, which is four. We do all have disclosures to give before we get started, so bear with us, because you're going to hear us say the same thing several times in a row. I will begin. For the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the Town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by some of these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosures with the Town Clerk and the Town Attorney. And I believe we all have a disclosure, so I'll just start with Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the Town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the Town Clerk and Town Attorney.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community.
the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefit from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I file the appropriate disclosure with town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Next.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'm an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest, and I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
Ms. Olem.
Madam Mayor, for the record, I also am an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed appropriate disclosure with the town clerk and town attorney.
And just to see if you're paying attention, we're going to mix it up a little bit with Ms. Friedrichs.
Madam Mayor, I have several disclosures this evening. For the record, I'm a paid employee of Arts Herndon. The budget deliberations may pertain to, one, grants to Arts Herndon, and, two, resources for the development of an arts center facility as part of the downtown redevelopment project. These items have applications solely to a business in which I have a personal interest. Therefore, I disqualify myself from any discussion and action on these items. I'm also an unpaid volunteer for various organizations in the community, some of which may receive grants or in-kind benefits from the town. Throughout the year, I may be invited to attend events hosted by these organizations as a guest. I am able to participate in the budget deliberations regarding nonprofit organizations fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. I have filed the appropriate disclosures with the town clerk and town attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are you ready to begin your presentation on the budget?
Absolutely.
Do you have a disclosure? I'm kidding.
Actually, I was going to say, I have no disclosures on the budget. Everything else is filed with the town clerk. Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased here to stand up before you today to present to you the FY 2018 budget. For, as you all well know, we've been involved in this process for several months. You've been very involved. We've been talking regularly about it. This presentation you're going to see tonight is mainly targeted towards going a little more in-depth than where we have been. And to the folks in the audience who have not seen some of these things before or just got the pamphlet in the mail and haven't really looked at the budget, and the folks on TV, they're in the same boat. So without further ado, let's delve on in. The overview tonight is going to look at the town council priorities and the budget guidance you've given me. We're going to look at the overview, the general fund in particular, delving the enterprise funds and obviously the capital improvement funds where we spend a lot of, a lot of money there. So the priorities and guidance. From very early on, you all were very specific. You wanted to keep moving down the path towards the 2035 vision. You made that very clear during the retreat, and this budget, I think you'll see as we unfold, will bear that out as well. You wanted to implement the townwide sustainability plan. As we get in this budget, you will see where we have done some things to prepare us to receive recommendations from the Sustainability Committee and be in the position to start acting on some of those recommendations. Advance the implementation of downtown redevelopment. Make sure we're fiscally sound and solid to continue the work towards a redevelopment proposal. Provide resources for the art center, also companion with the downtown. Continue the emphasis on the use of technology by staying current with advancements relevant. We have done so and you will see it throughout this budget as well. Provide resources to continue to support employee development. We've taken, and this goes with the next bullet on this, to maintain a competitive employment position. One of the things you're going to see as we talk about later on is the theme of looking at employment as more than just compensation. Taking a look at employment as employee development, as the employee environment, as developing leadership around the, around these things to, to help increase an employee satisfaction in their job at the town of Herndon. Continue to use unassigned fund balance to support capital. So basically longstanding practice of one-time revenues for one-time expenditures, recurring revenues for recurring expenditures. And provide a financial plan that allows us the, the structural capacity in the budget to assume debt that we might need for some significant public projects that may be on the horizon. So as the budget team sat down and started to discuss, some themes really became abundantly apparent to us. First of which was our revenues are flat, have been flat, and they've been flat for a while, dating probably back to FY 2012. The revenues have been probably in the same realm throughout all, throughout that entire cycle. So in order for us to do a little bit more, we also had the opportunity placed before us with new technology in our financial systems to allow us to do some data mining, to look for structural capacity where we might have been overspending in some areas, to create some capacity to add in some of the things to meet your priorities without having to go to additional revenue or anywhere like that. We also decided to take a look at the non-compensatory issues around employee work. That environment factor I'm talking about, the training factor we were just talking about, and putting funding into those elements of employment in addition to a competitive salary structure. So with that, budget overviews. Our total assessed value for property tax, our biggest, our biggest revenue stream is property taxes, is increased by 1.5%. You're looking at this and you're going, okay, what is the driver behind this? Was not existing real estate. Existing real estate is probably a little bit down and you'll see it on the later slide. This is new development that has allowed this to rise. Residential property has risen 2.5%. Commercial property is just kind of stagnant at .33. You'll see the property tax breakout that exists of this year. So with that, we are proposing to keep the rate at 26.5 cents per $100 assessed value. Going back to the point I just made about the existing real estate, to keep the same amount of money coming in off the existing real estate, we'd have to raise it to 26.71. This is where creating capacity in the budget became important for us. This gives you an idea, this chart right here gives you an idea of what it looks like over the course of those years. If you see where the tax rate has been steady since 2012, where the revenues have, where revenues have been steady on this tax revenue stream. So what we're talking about right now is an average residential property value that's up a little bit, but again, driven mainly by new development. And that's just, that's your average, that's not, that's existing and new together. So your average real estate tax bills increased about $22 over the course of last year. So oftentimes you, you get people coming in here going, you know what, we've, my tax bill has gone up, you know, 20%. Well, yes, that can occur. And for, in fact, seven households in, in Herndon, that did occur. But as you're looking at this distribution, you're seeing a lot of folks, they're in the no change or little change categories. This bell curve distributes out. It's somewhat weighted towards right down the middle. Pivoting from property taxes, the other tax categories. We are looking, we are not looking to change any rates from last year. Again, transient occupancy, we're looking at about 6%. That will yield about one, projected about one more percent in additional revenue in that revenue category. Meals tax, still 2.5. Again, we're projecting about 1% difference between last year and this year. B-pole, we're looking to be up 2.4. Communication, sales and use tax, we're looking to drop 4%. Bank stock tax, this is one of those ones where we were digging in and mining the data and we noticed some anomalies where we had been probably under budgeting a little bit based on what was coming in, that we're looking to be up 9.7. And then obviously, sales tax, we're looking at no change in sales tax and a 3.1% increase in our cigarette tax. Bearing in mind that the rates remain the same. Oftentimes we're asked, if we take a penny here or a percent there, what is it going to mean for the town of Herndon? One penny in real estate tax equates to $432,000. 1% meals tax equates to $890,000. 1% transient occupancy is $364,000. This gives you an idea of what that revenue does per penny or per percent. We are very aggressive going out and getting other governments to grant us money. You're seeing in this chart, the breakout of those grants to include the VDOT maintenance of 1.8 million. Police HB 599 is the same as last year at 569. And then you'll see the other grants that we get from other places, include Fairfax County on down the rest of the chart. So with that, we paint the picture of what is coming in, the themes, your priorities, and we crafted a budget that you're seeing in summary right here that is a $55.4 million budget across all funds. That is down 4.3 million, but as you see on this, the driver is capital. Our capital projects are less this year than in previous years. The general fund is up about $508,000 based on the structural capacity we're able to build as part of what we were doing with the budget analysis. If you look at how we're spending our money based on category, again, personnel is up $461,000. Capital is the one that's driving this down. Again, this drives home that point about capital. Inter-fund transfers are down a little bit. So overall, again, we're down 4.3 million. Delving into the, the general fund, we're recommending $35.6 million. That's a 1.4% increase over last year's adopted general fund. Personnel, we're looking at 261 full-time regular positions, all funds. This includes a brand-new school resource officer for Herndon police. This includes a part-time parking enforcement officer that is, we're projecting right now to 75% cost recovery on it. Utility maintenance, one worker in grounds, what we've been able to do here is take two part-time employees that they were having a hard time filling or getting to come to work, taking the same amount of money, converting it to one full-time employee where they feel that they can have a little more leverage over to get to work on time and do the job and they think they're going to get more mileage out of. We've eliminated three positions, some of these part-time, golf course operations, utility maintenance worker and a community inspector. All three of these positions have been unfilled for over a year. So we got rid of them. Overall, for the second straight year, Herndon played the lottery, please, because we had no increase in our healthcare. That is, that's surprising, shocking. I don't expect to see it next year. That's going to be probably our biggest problem next year as we're crafting this budget. VRS, retirement has been unchanged. We went out and polled the other jurisdictions, again, to try to keep some semblance of pay equity with other local governments, and about the average was a 3% pay-for-performance increase, and we're proposing the same here. That is an average. We have no market rate adjustment. Once we did the 3%, we really did not have a whole lot of room to assume a COLA this year. That being said, other jurisdictions were. And what that would start creating if we're not careful is some pay scales getting out of line with other jurisdictions. So we're proposing a 1% adjustment to pay scales. It's not money necessarily in an employee's pocket, but it gives them capacity to grow and it also keeps our positions competitive with the labor market. Other big drivers to the general fund, one is going back to the point we're making earlier about the importance of employee environments. The police ballistic door is a force protection issue. We're attempting to take care of our police officers. This is an important capital investment down at the police station that we feel pretty strongly about. Some of the other major O and M-related expenditures are your building maintenance, your mowing contracts, repaving landfill charges, and yes, you see sustainability initiatives. We were able to find towards the end of the process, some money that we could pocket away and hold in an account for the recommendations as they come to you later on this year so we can begin implementing. So we can't just sit here and talk about, we can actually do some things towards sustainability. Some notable areas of reduction. The first one is, right now is, this is a planning document. The Herndon Festival, right now, we're planning not to have a carnival next fiscal year, not this year, please, I'm sure Cindy's out there cringing. There will be a carnival this year, but next year, we expect downtown to be under development. So therefore, we have no place to put it right now. We are examining that question actively to try to find a way to salvage it. If we do, then we'll make a budget adjustment downfield. But right now, given the assumptions we had before us in going into this plan, we felt it necessary just to kind of put it on the sidelines for the moment. The second one was an interesting one. This was gas, oil and automobile repair. It's not that gas and oil got cheaper, automobile repair got cheaper. Again, being able to budget mine, going, going, mining that data, getting inside of it, looking at expenditure patterns over multiple years, we started seeing some patterns that we couldn't understand. We started to investigate and in the investigation, we're able to find $155,000 where we're over budgeting in these areas historically, and we're able to make an adjustment to open up budget capacity. Community grants, we received $284,000, $285,000 worth of grants. We struggled with this a little bit. We looked at the 20-year average of the percentage of general fund. And the 20-year average is 0.56% of the general fund goes to community grants. In a flat budget year, we threw the $200,000 on there and then we ran that number and $199,000 is 0.56 of, so we're right on the average for our 20-year. So we've put in there $200,000 allotted for you all to, to give community grants. Minor capital. Again, as you're looking at these things, be thinking about what we're talking about in terms of tools, equipment, vehicles, work environments for our employees. You're looking MCTs for the police, a computer communications workstation. We sat up here today and talked about the importance of our communicators and how stressful that job is. This is to make their job a little bit less stressful, more ergonomically designed areas for them to work in. We're looking at a bobcat that is able to plow snow on sidewalks, two-way radios, these sidewalk sweepers. All of these things you're seeing right here are tools and equipment, major in tools and equipment for our employees on the work, on the work site. Other, other major projects, police radios, this is a contribution towards a large police radio purchase that we're expecting in the next few years. We've been doing it every year to kind of reserve away money so that when that, when that expenditure comes up, we're not taking an enormous hit. IT projects, the one you're seeing right there, again, it goes right to employee work environments. We have phones that have been sitting on desks since 2003. They were really state-of-the-art back then. Maybe we can get, leverage our phone system a little bit better. So we're going to look at upgrading the phones, not the phone system, that's been upgraded. We're looking at trying to do more with monitors, try to do more with keyboards, try to make things a little bit better for the employees that are in front of keyboards and monitors all day, and that's what that $25,000 is for. The other things, building major maintenance, streetlights, bike facilities, all coming out of unassigned fund balance. The last two are unassigned fund balance-related capital expenditures. Reason why that's important is because we have a healthy unassigned fund balance. Right now, the unassigned fund balance projected to begin FY 2018 is $7.1 million. To put it in perspective, our policy for unassigned fund balance is 10% of our general fund, and right now, that would put you at about $3.4 million. So we're about twice as much as what we need to by policy in the unassigned fund balance. Next up, we're going to start talking about places we're going to have to incur some debt. Bonding. Let me just walk through some of the policies with ratio of debt per capita. In the black, you will see what the policy is, and the red, you'll see where we are. Okay? So the top, the top line ratio of debt service to assessment value maximum of 3% on July 1 of this year will be at 0.24. So we're, we're well under that. Ratio debt per capita is sitting at $573, we're at 499. Ratio debt service to recurring general fund expenditures, 12%. We are little, less than half of that, it's 6.6. So we are well within policy guidelines to incur debt. This chart just gives you debt per capita over the course of the past nine years, 10 years. And you see, we're pretty, we're pretty well positioned on the low end of where we've been, nowhere near a high watermark of 2010. Through this chart in there for you, this, this looks at what our available debt capacity is after deducting. Now I want you just to focus on the FY 2018 line at the bottom, the far right cell in the bottom right corner, the 12.3 million, that's available debt to us after taking out our 20% reserve. Again, trying to stay within policy. So as we're talking about these things, just, just keep that in the back of your mind. So with debt service, we're recommending right now, general fund debt service expenditures are... of $2.2 million. This is all of our existing debt and any debt that we may incur during the course of this year. Our outstanding debt at the end of FY 2017 is $10.2 million. And we're recommending issuance of new debt of $2.8 million to cover trails and minor sidewalks and downtown utility relocation, which is the undergrounding up along Eldon Digging, digging into our enterprise funds a little bit, water and sewer funds. We're recommending a decrease of 7.4% from last year. We are, right now, recommending no change in any of our rates. The rates will remain the same. One of the reasons why they're, we're keeping them at those levels is we are under, we're undertaking a rate study as we speak. I believe we're meeting on that probably in about two or three weeks as to where we are, and we will be coming back to you with some adjustments to this. But as of the creation of this budget, this is where the assumptions lie, so we went there. Just as an update, the AMR, the automated meter reading program is almost to completion. We're down to our last few meters to replace, in case you're wondering. Golf course, we're looking to reduce them by about 3.5% in this upcoming year. The big, major drivers to their budget request that are new, $109,000 that goes to mower, sprayer, and some golf course, golf carts. The mower and sprayer, environmentally friendly hybrids. The sprayer is important because it helps them put more precise chemicals and better chemical applications down, and I think it's more sustainable, more green than the current spraying systems. Cemetery fund, we're recommending a 5% decrease in the cemetery fund. The major highlight here, as I, as I talked about last week in the work session, the fence pillar replacement. I don't know how many people drive up and down Drainsville Road regularly, but those pillars are in horrific shape, and I'm glad we're getting an opportunity to, to do something about them. Downtown parking, $215,000 to include $200,000 that we are putting away for debt capacity associated with the downtown. And then $15,000 for the normal O and M of the Station Street and James Building parking Pivoting to the capital improvements program, we're looking at a total CIP of $4.9 million. Looking to fund it, $250,000 out of the meals tax, unassigned fund balance of $569,000, and a lease purchase of $695,000. Let me pause on the lease purchase, this is important, and again, it goes back to work environment, vehicles, and equipment. One of the hits we got off, off of the major snowstorm, not this past year because it was only this big, but the one that was really big last year, was we were having some problems with our equipment. We went back and did a comprehensive analysis of the major pieces of equipment on the town shop yard, and we looked at age of service, condition, looked at how it did during snow. Does it even do anything with snow? And we're looking to replace this year three dump trucks and one liftgate truck that, all four of which are probably 15 years or greater in, in service length, rust problems. It was funny, I was down at the shop this morning for their safety briefing. I'm driving out, and I'm behind, I think the liftgate, I'm praying the liftgate truck that we're replacing, and it is rusted in the back, the, the manufacturer's label's kind of falling off to the side, and I'm going, I'm praying that that is the one that we've chosen to replace. Dana, please? Yeah, let's say yes. So again, it goes to, it goes to work quality and work environment for those folks that have to sit in those trucks and operate them. Our intergovernmental revenues and grants, this is the important one that we talked about last week, $3.2 million. This go, this is going to transportation projects that are coming into this town from other governments paying for our projects. We're also routing off of $250,000 in bonds and $18,000 in proffers to fund the CIP. Here is the list of CIP projects we're looking at undertaking. Buren Street improvements, Herndon Parkway, Spring Street intersection of Fairfax County Parkway, some minor trails and sidewalks. We're looking at a quarter million dollars in major road repaving and traffic signals in unirruptible power, $150,000. This is another interesting point I want to make. DPW actually came in asking for $20,000 to do a couple of the traffic lights. We had capacity in a grant, so we turned around and upped it to 150 to do half of our traffic lights. So during the next power outage, the chief is in scrambling around to find people to direct traffic. DPW's in scrambling around to get generators out on site. The, the lights will continue to operate during the power outage, again, using other government's money.
We like that.
I know. Pivoting to the CIP Water and Sewer Fund, we're looking at $1.7 million in CIP-related expenditures in water and sewer. We're looking at doing some water maintenance replacement along Eldon and Cartline. We're looking at doing some major vehicle replacement of $55,000. This is an SUV that was, you know, back in the day, I had a 1994 Ford Explorer. I think it was older than that Explorer that we're replacing. And we're looking at some utility master plan improvements. And finally, the Third Street water tank needs some rehabilitation. That's a $1.1 million project. So again, I want to recap for a second those budget themes. As you saw throughout this, we're looking at revenues being flat. We had to find capacity within the budget that we had based on the guidance you've given us, and we've delivered, I think, a product here that's meeting these things, that's meeting what your guidance has been to us during this process. We're maintaining existing property tax and excise tax rates. We're adhering to the financial policies. We're supporting downtown redevelopment. You see technology interspersed throughout here. We're doing stuff, we're doing the right thing by our employees. We're pursuing sustainability, and I think all in all, we've done a pretty good job. At this point, I just want to thank so many people. This isn't a one-person operation. This is John Casella, our budget manager, taking the lead on this. It's all the department heads that are, that are involved every day, the finance department doing all the financial analysis for this project. I want to thank the human resources department and Tanya's crew for helping and helping with the administrative work. I want to thank Ann's folks, Jesse, who did an enormous amount of editing and formatting and PDFing. And Michelle Flores, for the first time, was put in charge of that element of the project to get it to print, and she did a phenomenal job there. And early in the process, I also want to thank Art Ansling for his leadership coming out of the gate, guiding me in some of these decisions we made. His historical knowledge was phenomenal and sort of, and very, very helpful. So with that, I will take your questions, and we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Ashton? Mr. McKenna?
I just basically, I asked everything last week, I think, so I just, I do want to, obviously, you had alluded to it, and I think, you know, moving down the road, we know we can make this a little more user-friendly as far as the overall budget. I have been looking at that stuff, so, yeah, it's, as far as, no progress for the vice mayor, so, but I think everyone did an amazing job as far as presenting the material, and, you know, that's, right now, like I said, you did a great job explaining everything last week and again this week, and I just think, you know, the only tweak I would have is something we can't control right now, but something we can look forward to in the future, and I'll definitely work with you on that.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the work session last week, the first work session in May, while this is still at the fore of your mind, and, and it's still in the fore of our minds as well, because we're, at that point, we're getting the adopted budget hopefully into print. Actually, I got a lot of grief this week. I'd set up the, the budget staff meetings for the first week in May, and so I think it was John who sent me an email going, "You're really optimistic about this adoption, aren't you?" It's like, hopefully I'm not jinking, jinxing this thing. But we're going to be back to you the first of May, and we're going to take a good, hard, comprehensive look at the product itself, and is it truly meeting the needs of this body and this community as a communications tool of how we're spending their money and how we're, how we're planning for the future.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
I just want to ask the question to reiterate that there is, I guess I'm making a statement, that there is no change in any tax rate proposed, real estate, meals tax, or any of our other excise taxes, we're remaining the same.
All rates will remain the same in this proposed budget.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, if there are no questions, then I will open the first public hearing, and I asked that question specifically because this first public hearing is a separate item which is just on the proposed ordinance to levy taxes. So if you're coming forward to speak on this public hearing, you should be speaking about whether, what you think about the proposed tax rate, if we should keep it the same, lower it, raise it, those types of things. Anyone who's here concerning grants, nonprofits, other items like the Carol Cabin and other items that have come up should come forward during the next public hearing. So is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the council on the ordinance to levy taxes? Okay. There, I, there, I see none, so I will, we're not going to close the public hearing since we will be continuing it for a date certain of April 25th, so I will ask for a motion to continue the public hearing, which is ordinance 170072 levy a tax rate. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion continuance.
Okay, discussion on the motion.
Sure, I'll just add, I mean, the budget is such a critical part of our role, right? And I just want to say thank you to the staff, and I know, you know, Mr. Ashton already mentioned that, but I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, and as, as you mentioned, there's been months that we've already been prepped on this, which is why we're not asking a lot of questions tonight. It's because we have asked a lot of questions, but certainly welcome this opportunity over the next few weeks and potentially, yeah, few weeks, both to continue to hear from you via email, via in-person, whatever way you want to tell us your input on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Olm.
Thank you. One thing about our budget and our tax rate is, if you want us to go down, you need to really come forward and talk to us about what it is we need to change so that we can make our budget. The other thing is, if you want us to go up, why? Or stay the same? But I'm grown up in a part of the country where we really didn't have many amenities like we have here in Herndon. Most of the people I know, including myself, really enjoy the community that we have in Herndon. I mean, shaving off things like no mayor's recognition of volunteers, we could do that, wouldn't save much money, but it's a small thing that we do that gives back to our community so much, and we've been doing that since '84 because we saw how great it was to have the volunteers. So volunteers come in many forms, whether you're volunteering in one of the numerous groups, like whether they're Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, your schools, your churches, or the other groups we have here in Herndon. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. McKenna?
I just want to say, maybe not necessarily for the audience here, but anyone watching at home or in reruns, to let you know that if you're not comfortable speaking before the dais or emailing or whatever, you know, give us a call. You know, if you see us on the street, just ask us questions. I mean, we're here to be your advocates, and, you know, the, the staff has done a lot of work on this, so, you know, we want to give them the consideration. At the same time, like I've said before, you know, I can look at a spreadsheet and make it work, but if I don't know what's on the spreadsheet, we can't make that work. So if you're, you know, not comfortable, certainly let us know. But I do want to thank the people that did reach out to me via email and everything else, and their information is a matter of record in one form or another. So thank you very much, and don't be afraid, we're here for you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Okay, well, I appreciate it. Somehow, since 2010, we have never raised our real estate tax rate, although the bill that you're paying at home does fluctuate based on the value of the property. Somehow, we've been able to do that, and a lot of that is the testament to the staff who really does a great job in finding the money that we need and allocating resources very effectively. So I appreciate all of you, and I'm really sorry that all of the management team has to come to the meetings in April, so we'll try to keep it snappy and try to be a little bit entertaining while you're here, but we do appreciate all your hard work. So I will call the question on the motion. This is just the ordinance on the tax levy, and Ms. Town Clerk, do we need to do a roll call vote for this? We do not. Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of continuing the public hearing until a date certain of April 25th, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. I'll next, open the next two public hearings concurrently, which are the fiscal planning resolution and the appropriations ordinance. This is the appropriate time to come forward if you are here for any specific item on the budget. You have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please wrap up. Is there anyone that would like to come forward?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Melissa Haley. I live at 884 Station Street, and I am the Vice President of the Herndon Historical Society. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the society and the request for a grant that was submitted earlier this year. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for your support of the society over the years and for your continued commitment to preserving Herndon's history. As we look to the future of the Herndon Historical Society, one thing is certain. Continued outreach and education is essential in order for the society to remain active, viable, and a contributing member of the community. Unless we connect with our residents and visitors, we will not be able to share Herndon's rich history. Unless we share that history, we run the risk of losing a part of our past. It is for these reasons that we want to increase our membership, reach more people with our services, and ensure that Herndon's history remains relevant and alive. Over the past few years, the Historical Society has made a number of strides in this regard. We recently became a 501(c)(3) organization, thereby hopefully reaching more members and contributions to continue our outreach. We established a Facebook page, which now has over 600 followers and visitors from all around the world. We also rejoined, rejoined the Holiday Homes Tour, which was something we actually were a part of starting many years ago, and already have seen a lift from that effort. The list goes on, but the reality is that in order to enhance our outreach efforts, we need a financial infusion. Granted, our universe is small, but therefore, our need is small, and the tiniest increase in funds can help us reach more people. We've requested less than $1,000 to support a number of outreach programs. For example, a portion of that grant money would go towards the development of a walking tour brochure that highlights the homes on our historic registry as well as other historic points of interest. This is something that's requested regularly at the Depot Museum, so it would meet a need and educate people of all ages. I won't belabor the details of the grant request since I know you all have access to it. However, suffice it to say that this is a great opportunity to preserve our past as we build our future. Lastly, I encourage all of you, if you're not already members of the Historical Society, to become one, and that's all of you, all of our residents we'd like to have as members, and also to join us for our next meeting, which is May 24th at 7:30. We always meet at the Depot. It's always open to the public, and it's free. Our next meeting will include a special guest who will be speaking about the WNOD Railroad. So we hope to see you there and for you to have an opportunity to see our outreach and education efforts in action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion to continue Resolution 17G41, which is the planning resolution, until April 25th?
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion on the motion.
Encourage everyone to please come forward and make your comments. You can email us, call us, grab us in the grocery store, or come to a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, certainly, I know we would all like to hear from more and more people. When we were looking for a dog, I got 16,000 hits on my Facebook page about it. I'd love to hear from 16 new people about the budget. That would be a feat, so come on down, we want to hear from you. Any other comments from council? Okay, thank you. I will call the question on the motion to continue. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And next up, is there a motion to continue the public hearing for ordinance 17008 to appropriate the funds to implement the budget?
So moved.
Who was that, Sheila?
Yes, it was. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion on this motion. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which does include the one item to create the Herndon Parkway Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries, and that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I'm if we could adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, and we stand adjourned at 8:29 PM. Thank you, everybody.